All right, thank you for bearing with us this evening. Prior to us coming back to order, I'd like to refer anybody who needs translator services to Ms. Angela Gama at the podium.
Thank you, President Maestas. Buenas tardes, habla Angela Gama. Si necesita servicios de interpretación a español, por favor llame al 1-805-324-7680 e ingrese el código de acceso 762-960-391 más la tecla numeral. Este es un número totalmente gratuito. Nuevamente, llame al número de teléfono 1-805-324-7680 e ingrese el código de acceso 762-960-391 más la tecla numeral. También puede acceder a estas instrucciones en nuestro sitio web en MCS4Kids.com, dirigiéndose a la parte inferior de la página en Quick Links y haciendo clic en Board Agendas para ir a la agenda de esta noche. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gama. Welcome to the Modesto City Schools Regular Board Meeting of September 8th, 2025. This meeting is now called to order. In closed session, the board gave direction to staff. We'll start here with the roll call. Trustee Brown.
Present.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Irvin.
Here.
Trustee Lopez.
Present.
Trustee Marks.
Present.
Vice President Mejia.
Here.
President Maestas, I am here. Some voice cracking. Student Board Rep Juliana Garcia.
Present.
And Student Board Rep Sabrina Tor.
Present.
All right, let the record reflect. All members are present, one virtually. Please stand and join me now in a moment of silence. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This open session of the Board of Trustees is being livestreamed at the direction of the board. The livestream is available on the district's website and the recordings will be available for viewing the day after the board meeting. MCS has provided an opportunity for the public to provide comments. It is outlined on the agenda and the public has been given an opportunity to email, email, voicemail, or call in and send us a comment or appear in person before the board. Any public comments via email or voicemail following the posting of the board agenda and prior to noon the day of the board meeting will not be read aloud but have been transcribed and printed with copies provided to each board member prior to the start of the board meeting and are available to the public. The voice and email public comments will be attached to a future board meeting minutes for approval. This practice will continue until further notice for members of the public that are interested in commenting in the future. We welcome your comments. If you wish to address the board during the period for public comment on a subject that is not on the agenda, you must complete a public presentation request card and submit it to the board president prior to the period for public comment. It looks like this. If you need assistance from our translator, please indicate so that, indicate that on the request card. Every person who wishes to address the board, please fill out a card. You will find the cards in the lobby and you can hand your comment card to Ms. Chambers in the back. She's going to wave. There she is, hi, Ms. Chambers. I also want to remind you, if you wish to make a complaint against a specific district employee, you should follow the district's personnel complaint procedure. Copies of that procedure are available in the lobby as are agenda copies which outline the procedures we will observe during the period for public comment. The right to address the board does not exempt a speaker from any potential liability for defamation. If you plan to speak on a topic that is not on the agenda, please fill out a card now as no cards will be accepted after the period for public comment has begun. The maximum time for any one speaker is three minutes for a maximum time of 30 minutes. For those of you requesting translator services, an additional minute will be added to your time. All right, we're pleased this evening. Want to have all of you here. Welcome, everyone. I know that there's some exciting stuff going on tonight, so we're happy to be here. We're pleased to welcome in the start two students from Robertson Road Elementary School to lead us in the flag salute tonight. So first up is Viridiana Garcia. Sixth grader Viridiana leads by example through her calm demeanor and steady presence. She's friendly, approachable, and always willing to learn and grow. During her time at Robertson Road, Viridiana earned a perfect score for math in CASP. Congratulations on that. And is a Road Runner Award recipient. She enjoys reading, art, and playing the violin. After high school, yeah. After high school, Viridiana wants to be a writer or a doctor. He could be both, writer and a doctor. Next, we have Marissa Toasty. Sixth grader Marissa is an outgoing, approachable, actively engaged scholar and positive role model. Through her work with the student council, Marissa regularly helps organize student events and fundraising activities that benefit the entire school community. She enjoys being in choir, playing the clarinet, and playing soccer, more music. After high school, Marissa wants to be a doctor or a teacher or both, doctor and a teacher. Okay, please join me in welcoming Viridiana and Marissa as they lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Students, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for leading us in the pledge. All right, great job, kiddos. I will now turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Pedrago, for her welcome and announcements.
All right, thank you, Board President Maestas, and good evening, everyone. We have a packed house, this is exciting. Well, time flies when you're having fun. In the past few weeks, I have been able to visit classrooms at a wide range of schools. I'm going to highlight some of these, so please be patient. Franklin, Cursin, Sonoma, Tuolumne, Roosevelt, La Loma, Henshaw, Modesto High, Enoch's, and Gregori. Thank you so much for welcoming me. It was fantastic just going through classrooms and engaging with kids. During these visits, the largest, the amount of time and the greatest joy was really just talking with students and observing active learning through inquiry, brainstorming, and writing. And even in one case at Gregori, students taught me how to manually measure blood pressure and it was so, so much harder than I anticipated. I have no idea how nurses do it. But the kids were very patient and they were fantastic teachers. I also got to see students practice their communication, leadership, and advocacy skills at Enoch's during Student Advisory Council. And I also take this time to express appreciation to Dave Houck for hearing students and as they provided input on cellphone use in schools and Tim Zerly, Roger Orth, Richard Nance, and Aaron Castro for collecting a very, very lengthy list of suggestions related to bathrooms and facilities in general. So just appreciate our staff for being willing to listen to students and thank students for their fantastic ideas and honest input. In the past few weeks, I have also spent a lot of time at just running back and forth and driving from one school to the next during back-to-school nights. And I had the pleasure of attending these events put on by Johansson, Byer, Downey, La Loma, Henshaw, Mark Twain, Orville Wright, and Garrison. The majority of our schools saw a huge turnout. I was absolutely amazed at the number of people who came out for back-to-school night. And I just take this opportunity to thank our teachers, administrators, and all staff really for opening their doors to our families. And of course, I can't thank our families enough for coming out and we hope to see bigger and bigger crowds as we continue to encourage family engagement. We recently started a project that is near and dear to my heart that I want to bring up tonight. In collaboration with Will Patterson, our communications team, and site administrators, we have held student listening circles. Most recently, we learned a lot from students at Davis as well as students from our junior highs. Similarly, in collaboration with Mike Henderson, Fallon Ferris, and Daniel Nego, we have kicked off staff listening circles or also known as focus groups. Family listening circles are going to begin in October. And really, the opportunity to consistently listen and learn from the people we serve is a game changer. And we have room for improvement and specifically, this is an important step in fostering a positive and collaborative culture while simultaneously acquiring the information that we need to improve student outcomes. So that listening is key and I thank everyone who's participating in that. Finally, I need to recognize the work of JNN at Gregori, VPN at Johansson, and Mohi News. Students from all three programs have exemplified professionalism and impressive expertise while conducting interviews with me and producing various stories for their respective communities. And for folks, if you have not had a chance to get acquainted with their work, please look them up online. They're giving local and national journalists and production teams a run for their money. They're doing such great work. I cannot imagine, you know, how much they're learning every single day, but it's very, very impressive, so check them out.
All right, thank you very much. Turn it over to Ms. Jerakina Shams for recognitions.
Good evening, Board Trustees. Thank you, President Maestas. Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Pedrago and my fellow members of executive cabinet as well as our family, staff, and community members who are here tonight. I hope you all enjoyed the Labor Day weekend and the welcome change to the cooler weather lately. So this is our very favorite part of the board meeting and tonight marks our very first recognitions of the school year. We're going to kick it off with tonight's Character Education Award and we're celebrating an outstanding scholar, Downey High School sophomore Brandon Tomas for his remarkable display of courage on campus. Joining us tonight to tell us more about Brandon's nomination are Downey High Principal Mr. David Sanchez and Assistant Principal Mr. Patrick Rodden. Why don't all three of you come up to the front and tell us a little bit about Brandon?
Good evening, everyone. Hi, everybody, it's good to see all of you. The reason we're here tonight is because of students like Brandon who really helped this district move. I always talk about how much I love Downey students and this is one example. Last spring, Brandon really showed courage in a situation that was pretty high pressure even for adults. There was a medical emergency in his classroom and as the classroom vacated and the safety officer moved in, the nurse, the health clerk, campus supervisors, myself, and other admin, Brandon stayed right by the side of his friend and just kept a really cool head and was right there just kind of saying his name, making sure that he felt comfortable. The situation was a little touch and go at moments and so just the fact that he was able to keep his head on and really keep it together, exemplified courage, it really even showed adults how to act in a situation. Because a lot of times we come into medical emergencies with a fight-or-flight feeling and he definitely had the fight in him just to be there and be calm and take care of his friends. So that's why I nominated Brandon for courage and I'm proud to have him here.
Powerful example of courage. Thank you so much, Brandon, and thank you so much, team, for sharing Brandon's story with us tonight. We're going to continue with our next recognition, the MCS Hero Award. And tonight, we're honored to present this award to a very deserving recipient, Mr. Rigoberto Rigo Rios, Head Custodian at Shackelford Elementary School. Mr. Rios was nominated by Ms. Erica Del Toro, Principal at Shackelford. Why don't you both join us up at the front?
And, oh, check, check, okay, awesome. And shout out to our Shackelford family here in the room to support Mr. Rigo. Okay, well, good evening, Board Trustees, Superintendent Dr. B., families and staff. So my name is Erica Del Toro, I'm principal at Shackelford Elementary School and I'm very, very proud to recognize Mr. Rigo Rios, which we call Rigo to the Rescue at Shackelford because he is always there when you need him. So I have something I'd like to read about him for this evening. So tonight, we're honored to recognize Mr. Rigo, our Head Custodian at Shackelford for exemplifying what it means to be a true hero on campus. He's dependable, hardworking, and dedicated to the success of our school community. He is always there when you need him. He steps in without hesitation. He never complains and he always responds with positivity. Whether it's working later or feeling in to support others, Rigo consistently demonstrates a team-first attitude. He takes great pride in keeping our campus safe, clean, and welcoming for scholars, staff, and families. His work ethic and positive energy set the tone for our entire school culture. So, Rigo, your dedication, commitment, and spirit truly make a daily difference and we are proud to recognize you tonight as our MCS Hero.
Congratulations, thank you. Thank you, Shackelford. Thank you, Mrs. Del Toro. Well, everyone, as we continue the evening, we're really honored tonight to have a special presentation for you. We're celebrating the start of Hispanic Heritage Month, which runs from September 15th through October 15th. On our consent agenda, you may have seen a proclamation rec. On our consent agenda, you may have seen a proclamation recognizing this important time. And tonight, we have a very special recognition to mark the occasion. At this time, I would like to invite our Board Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Patrago, and members of the Cabinet to sit here in the front row so that you can enjoy the show. You're going to see a performance tonight from a special group, Come On Up Team, from Johansson High School. As we think about the fact that Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to celebrate culture, history, and contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans. Here in Modesto, we are very fortunate to have a rich and diverse community that plays an important role in the lives of our schools in very meaningful ways. And the students you're going to hear and listen to tonight are the Mariachi Jardín Morado from Peter Johansson High School. I have to say, they're under the direction of music teacher Brad Hart.
Next, we're going to perform with you with our vocalist, Rele Sanchez Ballon, performing "Tristes Regueros."
Thank you so much. Is there more?
No.
Thank you so much. That was wonderful. Can we have pictures over here? Let's have pictures over here. Thank you so much, Mariachi. Thank you, Johansson High School. Thank you, students, and Mr. Hart. That was beautiful. What a treat.
Face some picture. She wants to be all right. Face some picture.
Everyone, thank you.
Thank you. I got to follow that up, huh? All right. Well, I don't. You guys do. Do you have any, are there any Board members who would like to share a report? We're on to Board Member Reports. Okay, Vice President Mieha.
I'll start first. Again, I've been a little bit inactive. As you can see, I'm rolling around. I haven't been to a lot of places. But I was able to attend our AdNIC Studies Guidance Council Committee. So that was pretty incredible. We also welcomed our two student reps, so that was really cool. And then I know we're in the process, we're doing a lot of launching. There's a lot of practice and a lot of training's going on, so I'm really excited for that as we kick off. And also, we're looking to also expand and get some other voices into our committee as well. So I'm really excited for that. And I'm hoping to be out my cast and be up and running around in a lot more places in the next coming weeks. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Urban.
Yes. I would like to start off by, I attended the Town Hall meeting that Supervisor Chancanet had in South Modesto, over at the new Sierra Vista Family Resource Center over there, which is a couple blocks from our Bret Hart Elementary School over there. So I got a chance to hear Supervisor talk about many of the infrastructure projects that they got going, are going to have going on there with the sidewalks and all of that good stuff on the south side to help mitigate the flooding and all of that stuff over there on the south side. So it was good to hear that Supervisor was laying out some of those plans and that the county is ramping up to mitigate the lack of sidewalks and other infrastructure on the south side. Also went to back-to-school night at Elliott, which was really good. I got to go in four classes. Three of those classes, I got a chance to poll the parents and the students about the new cellphone policy. And a surprise was that both the parents and the students welcomed the cellphone policy. Students, you know, commented that they felt it was a good thing, that they can focus more on what they're supposed to be doing, which is learning, and so didn't have any, they didn't have any issues with the cellphone policy. And polling the teachers that were there, none of them had issues with any students with the cellphone policy, except for one teacher, but said, you know, was able to mitigate it and, you know, and then there was no further issue with the cellphone policy. So that's good to hear, that parents and students are in agreement, along with the school board and the staff. So it was good to see those families out at back-to-school night. Also, I also went to the NAACP meeting where the Stan Slough County Office of Education Board Member, Board Trustee Chi Chi Jack did a presentation, a real good presentation, on bullying in schools and the impact of bullying on, you know, on students and how to prevent bullying and how to address bullying in schools. So it was a real good presentation that she did for the NAACP. Also, attended the Catalyst Event where our very own Dr. B. gave a very insightful and personal motivational and inspiring speech about her 100-day platform. And I was truly inspired by her background, her challenges growing up and attending school in Modesto, at Modesto High, and overcoming those challenges to now become our Superintendent. And so, like others, we're also inspired by her presentation. So got a good chance to hear that, hadn't heard it before. So it was really good. Also, got a chance to go to Cal Berkeley game versus Texas Southern University. Got a chance to take, there were 64 students, and we had some chaperones, and had a really good time at the game. Our students were on their best behavior, mannerable, you know, having that many students. And so I just want to commend Will Patterson, Mr. Will Patterson, for organizing that, and for Dr. B. for ensuring that we were able to get the buses to go. And Associate Superintendent Mark Herbst, that, to pull that together, I got the tickets at the last minute, so to speak, and they all worked together to make it happen for all the students that attended. Shout out to the chaperones. Again, like I said, we were, our students were well-behaved and mannerable on the trip. And so got a chance to tour the campus. So all in all, it was a very good day, a long day, but a very good day. And so, with that being said, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Brown.
Yes, I've got three things to report. Once again, shout out to Catalyst and the opportunity to hear Dr. Butrago. So, nice to hear your story and how you connect with the, with so many of our students and their needs and appreciate you sharing that with the community. Also, had the opportunity to attend the construction team meeting. And, once again, I just can't thank this group enough for all of their dedication and the juggling that happens to carry out so many positive projects within our district all the time. Working around the schedules of our students and everything that happens on our campuses to make sure that we can continue the great work of construction. And, once again, always a shout out to the community. Thank you, thank you, thank you for making it possible for us to do these great things for our students. I also attended the Association of Stanislas County School Boards. I represent Modesto City Schools on that council. And, once again, it's always great to go and report out on the great things that are happening within our district and the positive things that are happening within the community because of what we're able to do. Want to just point out a couple of things that were brought to our attention, and these are not new, but Scott Kikekendall, the county superintendent, told us about the Stanislas Rewind and Respire Initiative that's in place this year. And he has made himself available for presentations about the use of cellphones and the risks, and especially training for parents. And so, I just wanna make sure that schools and people within the community are aware that he's available for presentations about this initiative. And I'm sure we're all going to hear more about it as the year goes on. Other great information was shared with us about Supreme Court decision and opt-out issues. We know that's going to be a hot topic within our district and all districts in the county. And we were, our attention was brought to AB 1390 that we'll be learning about with questions about pay for school board members. So that will be coming up in the next little while. So, anyway, good, good meeting. That association is very active and very effective in their involvement in the, the community, and it's great to hear and see other districts and what they're doing. What I was really pleased with was to hear from the county level how Modesto City School has set the standard and shown other districts how they too can go after bonds and raise the money that they need to make improvements that they see us making. So it's, it's really fun to see and celebrate their progress as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Brown. Trustee Marks.
Thank you. It's great to hear all that you've all been up to this last few weeks, and I just have one to report. I was at the Gregori High School Back to School Night. Great turnout, as has been said already. And got to see our Map Your Mission video, which was fantastic. I recognized Linda's voice on there, and I got to sit next to Mark Herbst at the event, and it was so great. And I met a brand-new teacher, came in from Florida, and so she's super excited to be in our district and got to see the parents coming into the classrooms and with students and just the excitement about hearing some of the expectations in the classroom and just the, you know, atmosphere, walking around with all the students around the campus and, you know, them enjoying all the new paint job and just, it looked so great out there. And I know they planted some more trees, which I think will be great to give some more shade on that grass out in the middle of the, the middle of the quad there, so. But it was really, it was really wonderful to be out at the school and, and just see the students and talk to them and talk to the parents. So, it was good. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Marks. I have, also went to some Back to School Nights. So I went to Enoch's, and I'll get back to that one in a second, but I went to Lakewood and that was my, I went a little late because I wanted to go as dad and not as board president, Maestas, and that was gonna, that's my last Back to School Night at Lakewood. My kids have been at Lakewood since my son, who's now a junior at Enoch's, was a kindergartner. And now my youngest daughter is the last one to go through Lakewood, so. Yeah, it's been, it's been our home for our kids for, for many years. And my daughter loves, loves her teachers, so we're, we love the sixth-grade teacher, it's just awesome. But to Enoch's, I also got to see the, the, the Map Your Mission, and awesome, I can't wait, I think we're gonna see it tonight, yes. So, great, I'm, I'm excited for everyone else to see that video, it was, it was great. And I wanted to highlight one thing, all the teachers are great, great teachers, but I wanted to highlight one thing because it was really, really important to me. Over the last few years while we were getting together Ethnic Studies, I had expressed many times that I was still a little concerned about Ethnic Studies being at the freshman level because just, I, I've taught freshmen for many, many years, and getting them to, one, talk to one another just for, just like math or anything, was really difficult. And thinking about the type of things that they were gonna need to be able to discuss and the culture that needs to be built within that classroom was a little, I'm still a little nervous, but I always said it, it takes the right teacher to make that happen, and that night, I met the right teacher. So, I just wanna give a shout out to her because my son loves the class, his favorite class is Ethnic Studies. And she has created just a culture of, a culture in her class that allows kids to feel safe and, and open. And, and I just, I'm amazed at her, so I really just wanna say, great job preparing our Ethnic Studies teachers, those of you out there. I, I'm, I'm very happy to hear that, so I feel at least my son is, is, is gonna have a good experience and safe in that class. Okay, so Back to School Nights were great, and that's all I have, so we will move on, unless there are any others. Okay, so we'll move on to the next thing, which is our Consent Agenda. Are there any comments from the public regarding Consent Agenda items? All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the Consent Agenda from the board? It's moved by Trustee Daly, second by Vice President Mejia. We'll do a roll call vote, vote, vault, that was weird. Okay, we'll do a roll, roll call vote. We'll start with Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Daly.
Aye.
Trustee Irvin.
Aye.
Trustee Lopez.
Aye.
Trustee Marks.
Aye.
Vice President Mejia.
Aye.
President Maestas, aye. Student Board Rep Juliana Garcia.
Aye.
Student Board Rep Sabrina Tour.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Do I hear a motion to approve the order of our Discussion Action Items? Motion by Trustee Daly, second by Vice President Mejia. Roll call vote, vote. Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Daly.
Aye.
Trustee Irvin.
Aye.
Trustee Lopez.
Aye.
Trustee Marks.
Aye.
Vice President Mejia.
Aye.
President Maestas, aye. Student Board Rep Juliana Garcia.
Aye.
Student Board Rep Sabrina Tour.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. That brings us to our period for public presentations for topics that are not on the agenda. Thank you again for attending our meeting tonight and showing interest in our schools. I have one card, and I'll ask the speaker to come to the podium and address the board stating your name. For the record, you'll have three minutes to speak, and any additional minute will be added for translation services. So, Mrs. Lourdes Yurandi.
Hey, everyone. Good evening, President Maestas, trustees and superintendent Butrago. My name's Lourdes Yurandi, and I'm the Executive Director and Founder of the Be Anything Museum here in Modesto. Thanks for the opportunity to speak here today. The Be Anything Museum was created to inspire students to imagine their futures and see the endless possibilities before them. Our mission is simple, to empower and inspire individuals of all ages, backgrounds, by showcasing the stories and achievements of extraordinary role models, fostering a belief that anyone can achieve their dreams and make a positive impact on the world. When students visit the museum, they enjoy a guided tour where history, culture, and innovation come together. Beyond the exhibits, we invite local professionals, teachers such as doctors, engineers, artists, business owners, and first responders to share their personal career journeys. These real-life presentations show students what's possible, while our career exploration activities and workshops help them connect what they're learning in the classroom with potential career pathways, whether that leads to college, skilled trades, or entrepreneurship. We are conveniently located in downtown Modesto, right next to the Children's Museum, making us an accessible and enriching stop for school field trips. For your planning ease, we also have a dedicated bus access through the alleyway, so student drop-off and pickup is simple and it's safe. A visit to the Be Anything Museum is more than a field trip. It's an opportunity for students to connect with role models from their own community, to see themselves in future roles, and to be empowered to dream without limits. So on behalf of the Be Anything Museum, I'd like to extend an invitation to the school district and your teachers to bring their students for a museum tour and career, career exploration workshops. Together, we can help prepare and inspire the next generation of leaders, innovators, and professionals right here in Modesto. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to welcoming Modesto City School students and teachers to the Be Anything Museum. I've left some information and some pens, so you guys could have some additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, again, although we cannot engage in discussion or take formal action items on on the agenda, we thank you for following protocol and addressing the board and for taking the time to share your views with us this evening. This will move us to our student reps, and our student reps decided before the meeting that Student Representative Garcia will go, go first this time. Do you have a report?
I do. Good evening, everybody. It's so good to see you guys, and we had a really good crowd before a lot of people left, and the Mariachi Band was so phenomenal and amazing. I was so blown away by them. But anyways, moving on to my report, so last Thursday, I was able to attend the Student Advisory Council meeting at Enoch's, and there was an amazing turnout. Like, I'm pretty sure half the library was like filled with just students from all over the district, including junior high students, which I was super excited to see them. But my main takeaways from the meeting were seeing the excitement around the Be the Change campaign. I personally loved the elementary video. That one really inspired me to be the change. It was so adorable. And I also love seeing the involvement in every discussion topic. There were a lot of students who stood up, and they had no problem speaking out and giving their opinions about things, and so I think that this is a great council, and I look forward to seeing them grow. I really did love their concerns regarding cellphone usage in classrooms, and that was really inspiring, and it made me feel good to see that students felt empowered enough to speak up about these things. To add, all of the students expressed their gratitude for the bathroom changes being made. There was so much time on that, so. A shout out to facilities for taking every concern so seriously. I know that students present do appreciate their voices being heard, especially about things happening on their campuses. And then finally, Sabrina and I have been working on ways that we can encourage students across the district to find something they're passionate about and become the change. And so this is gonna be one of our main topics at our inner high meeting next Wednesday, and we look forward to gaining some more insight from students on how we can really help them grow and become the change. But that's all for my report, and I will now turn it back over to President Maestas.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Student Rep Garcia. Next, we'll hear a report from Student Rep Tour.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Dr. Butrago, President Maestas, and trustees. I was also equally impressed with the Mariachi Band tonight, so that, that was just incredible. I'll start off by saying that high schools, they've successfully started their fall sports seasons, and clubs are also underway. So many sites have begun their mock trial, speech and debate, and other academic competitions. In terms of inner high, like Juliana mentioned, our first meeting will be next Wednesday. And of course, inner high involves ASB representatives from across our district to meet and discuss upcoming school activities and gather student input for district-level events. We look forward to discussing how we can best represent our students, keep an open communication between students and the board, and of course, identify those key issues that we can begin working on this year. Julie and I also attended the Ethnic Studies Guidance Council on August 25th. That was led by Ms. Lori Hewlin, and it was nice seeing Trustee Mejia there as well. I, I really enjoyed learning about the class and the skills that we expect freshmen to come away with after taking the class, such as, you know, critical thinking and understanding different perspectives. But I also do share in hesitation, President Maestas, about how freshmen will really be able to apply this information just considering their age. So, at the meeting, we did recommend that we hear from other teachers and students, freshmen at the end of their term after taking this class, and perhaps get a better idea of just how we can make this class more enriching for students. Because I really do agree with the approach and the message. I think it's really great to learn critical thinking. It's an incredible skill. And then, of course, regarding our exciting campaigns, Be the Change and Map Your Mission, at Modesto High at least, Ms. Pam Gallart, our principal, she has informed teachers, parents, and students about the campaigns. We've also signed off our bi-weekly Mohi News broadcast to all students to be respectful, responsible, and be the change. Thank you so much, Dr. Butrago, for the shout out for our student productions. A lot of my peers who are in our Mohi News, they do an incredible job. They work exceptionally hard, and evidently, it's, it's seen. And then, we're also integrating Be the Change with Mohi's PBI system, which I think will be great. So I'm looking forward to seeing how other sites will implement these campaigns at their sites as well. That's all for me this evening, and I'll pass it back to President Maestas.
Thank you, Student Rep Tour. All right. Do we have a representative from MTA that would like to give a, an update? All right, so no? Okay, how about CSCA?
Good evening, President Maestas, trustees, Dr. Butrago, and cabinet members. I'm grateful for the opportunity, oh. I'm Fon Peterson, Modesto 007 Chapter President. Grateful for the opportunity to be here tonight. What are we about? Six, eight weeks into school? Sorry, I lose track. Four. Oh my goodness!
Feels like six, right?
Oh, wow, so much has transpired. Okay, it's been a great four weeks. My CSC, our chapter executive board, had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Butrago and the cabinet members this past week. And we enjoyed getting to know Dr. Butrago a little bit better and having the opportunity to sit in the same room with the leadership of our, our schools and get to know each other a little bit better, get to know some of Dr. Butrago's thoughts about how she sees this school district moving forward and how that, the interaction with CSCA can benefit our, our members, but also the, our students. I was looking at our executive board, and several mentioned that they have students, children going to Modesto City Schools. But most of our executive board has had children go through Modesto City Schools, even if they're not currently Modesto City Schools students. And so, the impact of the decisions that are made affect us in our families, in our work, personal life, work life. And so, it's, I think that, that can be said for a lot of the employees of Modesto City Schools, I think that can be said for a lot of the employees of Modesto City Schools, that we are invested due to our family relationships as well as our work relationships. One of the things that we've been working, I wanted the school board to know, one of the things that CSCA has been working with, with the leadership, is to keep them informed of trends that we see. We started tracking the data, shout-out to Monique Fernandez, our first VP and chief union steward. She's been tracking the data from cases that come to us from employees, classified employees in the district, and we're trying to track what areas of the contract are we seeing a lot of cases come in, a case being where a member comes to us either with a question because of something that's happening at their site, or a complaint that they would like us to take forward. And so, it's been really interesting seeing that data, and maybe that's where I went to six and eight weeks, because we've actually had 61 cases come through since July 1st, and being able to see how those concerns are spread out through our contract and through just however they lie, just getting that data helps us to work with the leadership of Modesto City Schools and figuring out what we can do better, how we can help our members, our employees have a better experience working for Modesto City Schools, which is going to make a better experience for the kiddos that are attending Modesto City Schools. So it's been quite a learning curve, as Monique's brought that data to us, trying to figure out how we can keep the same things from happening over and over again, what we need to do to make it work better for everyone. I wanted to share that out, just so that you know, that we're trying to make it a collaborative process. We've shared it with leadership, so they know what we're finding. I really want, from a personal standpoint, I want to share that I see a change in Modesto City Schools' philosophy with the new leadership that we have, and I think it can truly make a difference for all our employees, all our teachers, all our students, custodians and nutrition service workers, that the heart that is brought into the business of helping our students succeed, and I appreciate that. I stood up for that today and kind of put myself on the line, and I'm planning on it being successful. And just wanted to share that I can see us working well together in the future and making Modesto City Schools even more successful than it already is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Okay, that'll move us on to our first report, and that is a report on Map Your Mission.
Good evening, Board, President Maestas, trustees, Superintendent Butrago, Cabinet, and guests. My name is Amanda Schroyer, and I'm a Senior Director of School Leadership, and I'm honored to begin tonight's presentation on Map Your Mission. I will be joined tonight by my colleagues behind me. I have Rachel Barkus, Senior Director of Educational Options, Ryan Reynolds, Senior Director of Assessment and Evaluation, Linda Mumma Salorio, Public Information Officer, and Tony Lamelli, Senior Director of Student Support Services. We have a whole big team here. Together, we will share how this strategy is reshaping college and career readiness for every student in our district. The goal, or Map Your Mission, is our district's unified approach to preparing students for life after high school. The goal is not simply for students to graduate, but to graduate truly ready, with skills, confidence, and the readiness to take charge of their next steps. Our collective why is rooted in the district's vision. Every student graduates with the skills, knowledge, and character traits essential to thrive and contribute into society. The Map Your Mission framework turns that vision into action, making it real for every student in every school at every grade level, while giving students greater ownership and planning for their futures. With this vision as our guide, the next step was to align this work directly with our district goals. Map Your Mission is directly tied to our district goals, specifically Goal 1.2 that calls for us to increase the number of students identified as prepared on the California State Dashboard College and Career Indicator. This ensures that readiness is not a side effort, but a central priority. It takes our longstanding commitment to graduation and elevates it. So diploma is not the finish line, but the launchpad for success, reinforced by each student's readiness for what comes next. Tonight's presentation will share the history of our readiness journey, explain the purpose and structure of Map Your Mission, describe the systems and supports we've put in place, and the steps ahead. And I want to be clear, this strategy is not about locking students into a single track. It is about making sure they understand the multiple opportunities available to them, while encouraging them to keep their options open and feel empowered to make informed decisions. That is why A- through G coursework remains the foundation for all students. It is the common baseline that protects equity, ensures every graduate, ensures every graduate has genuine options. At Modesto City Schools, our efforts are not in isolation. They are aligned under a broader vision for student success. Our instructional core reflects our dedication to effective classroom practices for all students. It is the foundation that ensures high-quality learning in every subject, every day. Map Your Mission builds on that foundation by guiding every student toward being college and career ready, ensuring preparation extends beyond the diploma, and that students are empowered by, empowered to direct their journeys. Be the Change, which you'll hear more about next board meeting, is our district-wide approach to creating safe, respectful, and inclusive learning environments, because readiness also requires belonging, dignity, and well-being. Together, these frameworks create coherence across our district, strong instruction, clear pathways that promote student ownership, and safe environments where students can thrive. Before 2020, the district's focus was on stability. We worked to guarantee that every student had access to learning, that barriers were removed, and that a diploma was within reach for every graduate. That work was essential, but it was only the foundation. We knew our students deserved more than just a diploma. They needed preparation for the future, along with confidence and agency to pursue it. After the pandemic, the district made a deliberate strategic shift. We centered our efforts on post-secondary success and aligned everything with the district's vision. During this time, we developed unified college and career readiness practices that emphasized student involvement and planning. We implemented school links across all secondary schools as our district platform, giving students new tools to explore and to design their futures. We also engaged in regular data-driven collaboration to monitor and improve student supports. This marked the transition from focusing only on graduation to building systems that prepare students to actively shape their next stage in life. So why Map Your Mission? Because graduation alone is not enough. Our students deserve to leave high school truly ready, ready for college, ready for career, and ready to contribute to society. That means they must be equipped with the essential skills, grounded in deep knowledge, and guided by a clear path for their future. Most importantly, they should walk away with a sense of ownership to pursue the path that they choose. This is not about preparing some students. This is about preparing all students. Map Your Mission ensures that every graduate leaves with more than just a diploma. They leave ready to pursue higher education, enter their workforce with confidence, and contribute fully to their community and to society. At its core, Map Your Mission is a comprehensive framework for college and career readiness. It is designed to empower students to pursue robust pathways that match their strengths and their interests. It works to ensure every student maximizes their options, so they aren't limited in choices available after graduation, and it is built to keep the doors open as students make critical decisions about their life after high school, ensuring that they remain in control of their own direction. In short, Map Your Mission is about opportunity. It provides every student the chance to graduate with both a diploma and the preparation to confidently shape their future. To carry out this work, we've organized our focus in three major priorities. First, unified branding and awareness, creating consistent messaging and launching a district-wide campaign so that college and career readiness is visible and clear to students, families, staff, and the community. Second, leveraging data to drive continuous improvement and providing every school with school links as a shared platform for course planning, goal-setting, and tracking progress, where students actively engage in charting their own path. And third, collaboration across the district. As you can see behind me, we are aligning all departments under a shared vision, strengthening PK-12 articulation and continuity, and building stronger connections between schools and departments so that readiness is a shared responsibility rather than the work of a single team. Together these priorities, make sure that Map Your Mission isn't just an initiative, but a district-wide strategy embedded into everything that we do. So how do we measure readiness? The state of California defines eight routes by which a student can be identified as prepared on the college and career indicators. These include A- through G coursework, career technical education pathways, dual enrollment, advanced placement and international baccalaureate exams, smarter balance assessments, JROTC, the state seal of biliteracy, and work-based learning opportunities for our students pursuing a certificate of completion. These routes are not meant to confine students. They are flexible opportunities that give students the freedom to explore and the responsibility to make decisions that fit their aspirations. And through it all, A- through G remains the anchor that guarantees every graduate has access to the broadest range of options. Okay, so what we've heard about just recently with the Map Your Mission video, so with this foundation in place, we would now like to share our Map Your Mission overview video. This video was designed for staff, students, families, and the broader community. It highlights eight readiness pathways in a clear and engaging way, showing exactly what it takes for a student to be truly prepared for life after high school, and how they're empowered to take their own ownership of that journey. So here we go.
You don't have to figure it out alone. We're here to help you map your mission. Whether you're dreaming of going to college, starting an exciting career, or deciding your next step, we'll help you get there. And here's the best part, there are eight different ways to show you're prepared for what's next. Your first step is to focus on meeting A- through G requirements. Doing this keeps all your life opportunities open, both college and career. At the same time, you can pursue one or more of these additional paths that fits you best. Show how you're college-ready by taking AP or IB exams, or even earn college credit now through dual enrollment. Prefer hands-on learning? Complete a CTE pathway in fields like health science, construction, agriculture, and more. Students with an IEP who are working towards a certificate of completion also have another option, work-based learning and career exploration. Want to show off your skills? Get a strong score in English and math on your 11th-grade CASP tests, and depending on the school, you may be eligible to skip extra prep classes in college. Earn the state seal of biliteracy on your high school diploma to show you're fluent in more than one language, or build leadership and confidence in JROTC. No matter which path you choose, you're not in this alone. School Links is your one-stop shop to explore your interests, plan your classes, research careers, apply to colleges, and track your readiness. As you hit milestones, you'll level up with digital passport stamps, badges, and stickers to celebrate your progress. There's no one right path, just your path, and you don't have to walk it alone. So what's your mission? Where do you want to go? We're here to help you get there. Map your mission, your future, your path, your plan. Visit MCSforKids.com/MapYourMission to start your journey.
Not sure... Great video, Mariachi, I have to say, took the top ranking either way, so. Modesto City Schools advance college and career readiness through key systems and structures at each level. At the heart of this work is elevating student voice and agency by ensuring that every student has the opportunity to explore their interests, shape their own goals, and take an active role in their journey toward post-secondary success. This can be accomplished by creating alignment across grade levels and creating systems so that all students at all schools have access to similar experiences in preparing to be college and career-ready. This starts by ensuring that every student has age-appropriate college and career readiness activities from the elementary level through the high school level, as well as ensuring each district department and staff are aligned under Map Your Mission to provide tools and resources to our students, families, and staff. In addition, we will expand the utilization of our college and career platform, School Links, this year, from high school, now new, all the way down to third grade for the first time. And lastly, but most importantly, ensuring that we engage our families to be part of each of their students' mission. It is important to build a foundation in college and career readiness at an early age, so in essence, a foundation for Map Your Mission is laid at the elementary level, where students first start connecting to their interests in the future. We will introduce Map Your Mission and incorporate College and Career Days every Thursday at each elementary school. New to elementary school will be the implementation of utilizing our college and career platform, School Links, down to third grade, in which students can explore college and careers and also start to become familiar with the pathways that are available at the next levels within the school district, as well as continue our focus in instructional core in ensuring each student have a strong foundation in English and math skills to be successful learners. At the junior high level, we are intentionally preparing students for their next steps by elevating student voice and choice. Through Map Your Mission, every student begins setting goals and shaping their path forward. Our district-wide Thursday College and Career Days provide consistent opportunities to bring awareness, while School Links helps students create personalized plans for junior high, and they start their charting of their course through high school and beyond. To bring careers to life, our Inspire Youth and Inspire Dreams events connect students with real-world role models and showcase CTE pathways for all 7th and 8th grade students, including those from non-MCS feeder schools like Sylvan School District and Salida School District, thus ensuring every student has a voice in creating their future. At the high school level, we are continuing to ensure there's alignment with the integration of Map Your Mission and College and Career Days. Using School Links, every student builds a four-year plan and a college and career profile that connects their interests to future opportunities. We could also track their progress against college and career indicators, ensuring they continue exploring careers and post-secondary pathways. All of this ensures that when students graduate, they have the skills, experiences, and confidence to make informed decisions about their next steps. And now, I will turn it over to Rachel Barkus, Senior Director of Educational Options, to discuss departmental support.
Thank you, Tony.
To bring careers to life, our inspire youth and inspire dreams events connect students with real-world role models and showcase CTE pathways for all 7th and 8th grade students, including those from non-MCS feeder schools like Sylvan School District and Salida School District. Thus ensuring every student has a voice in creating their future. At the high school level, we are continuing to ensure there's alignment with the integration of map your mission and college career days. Using School Links, every student builds a four-year plan and a college and career profile that connects their interests to future opportunities. We could also track their progress against college and career indicators, ensuring they continue exploring careers and post-secondary pathways. All of this ensures that when students graduate, they have the skills, experiences, and confidence to make informed decisions about their next steps. And now I will turn it over to Rachel Barker, Senior Director of Educational Options, to discuss departmental support.
Thank you, Tony. So we're going to be talking about how we're all working together to support this initiative. Our various departments, along with family and community, work in coherence to support our students' college and career paths. We aim to offer student voice and choice in the strategies we use each and every day. To start, our counselors provide hands-on personalized support to every student through course planning and transcript evaluations to ensure students are on the right path to graduation. Our navigators guide students through the dual enrollment process. From application to registration, they are there to support students every step of the way. Beyond academics, our navigators and work experience educators connect with students on internships and work-based learning opportunities, bringing college and career readiness beyond the classroom. The school leadership team is ensuring that map your mission initiative is implemented with consistency and clarity across all sites. By streamlining balloting and scheduling, strengthening articulation from elementary through high school, and enhancing communication with students and families, the leaders are creating smoother pathways for success. The feeder school and district articulation meetings are scheduled with key partners, both within Modesto City Schools and our feeder districts, to streamline and enhance our communication around student transitions from elementary to junior high and from junior high to high school. In addition, focused professional development on A to G, CTE pathway sequencing, and overall college and career student support is being provided for teachers, counselors, and administrators so that every site is equipped to guide students effectively towards their college and career goals. In educational options, we are providing targeted professional development in CTE pathways, ensuring counselors and administrators fully understand how pathways align with industry certifications and career opportunities. This training equips staff to guide students towards completing the pathways that lead directly to college and workforce readiness. On the dual enrollment side, our focus is on streamlining processes and procedures. We are strengthening partnerships with Modesto Junior College to simplify enrollment steps, align course offerings with student interest, and ensure credits transfer seamlessly. By improving these systems, students have a clearer, more accessible path into college-level coursework while still in high school. Finally, we are monitoring data to support all student groups' participation in CTE and dual enrollment opportunities. We have a focus on providing broader access for students with disabilities, engaging families earlier in the planning process, and providing summer and intercession opportunities. We want every student to have a voice and choice on their educational path. In student support services, we are implementing School Links from grades 3 through 12 for six-year course planning and boosting CCR-focused professional development. Additionally, our goal is to provide early interventions, family engagement in CCR planning, and building structures to make sure every student has the support that they need. The goal is to make readiness a shared responsibility, supported by counselors, teachers, and families. So on to our family and community engagement. We know that family engagement is essential in supporting student success. Our team hosts parent events like FASFO workshops, college and career fairs, and college nights to make sure that families are informed and supported. We are also there and excited to share automatic admission opportunities into college for our students, providing more access and options for college. Families can now track and support student plans directly in School Links, giving them transparency in the college and career journey. Finally, our outreach efforts extend CCR-focused engagement to all of our school sites, including elementary schools. So that families and the communities are connected early and often in the mission of giving our students voice and choice as they prepare for their future. Finally, technology is helping us deliver these supports with precision. We're working with School Links to configure automation, roster student accounts with single sign-on, integrate Power School student data for seamless planning, and create parent accounts for stronger engagement. This system also supports district-wide reporting so that we can track progress and make data-driven improvements. And now, I'd like to introduce Ryan Reynolds, Senior Director of Assessment and Evaluation.
How cool are those stamps? And I want one, those passport stamps. I heard Tony's going to be giving out some passport stamps if you make it through my part of the presentation, so. All right, well, bottom line, tech is how we deliver support and precision. And IETS partners with School Links, so what you see is truly Modesto-specific. And let me tell you some more about that. We automate the boring parts. And I know that's hard to believe, what's boring, but that comes down to the nightly syncs and the health checks. So people can do the human parts. If there's a gear icon, our team lives there. So access just works, no join codes, no password scavenger hunts. If you enroll today, you're in tomorrow. Transfer schools, your data comes with you. Students don't start over and neither do their plans. We sync grades, programs, and course history from Power School, and the planner uses the real MCS course catalog with prerequisites and college entrance A to G rules baked in. So when students build a plan and ballot for their classes, it's what we actually offer on pathways that actually fit. That's a big deal. And families aren't spectators, we create parent accounts too. So they can see milestones and they can recommend schools or careers. And their child's counselors can be messaged and track progress too. So finally, district-wide reporting lets us spot trends, celebrate wins, and fix areas of need quickly. In short, hey, it works. It's accurate and it saves time for students, families, and staff. With IETS and school leaders, we focus reporting on practical questions. Are students logging in? Are they completing milestones? And where do we need an extra nudge? By school or student group, our dashboards align to the college and career indicators so principals and counselors can act quickly. Celebrate growth, find action items, and track progress over time. This isn't just data for us to admire or stare at, this is data to use on Monday morning. This is where students make a plan they actually use. School Links lets them build personalized college, career, and academic plans, then set goals with clear milestones. Students and families can see progress at a glance, which keeps everyone aligned and reduces those "I didn't know" moments. For counselors, it means more time coaching and less time chasing paperwork. And before students can plan, they need to know themselves. Interest inventories and career assessments help them discover what fits. From there, college search and scholarship tools turn "I might" into "here's where I'll apply and how I'll fund it." It's exploration with purpose, so the plan isn't guesswork. And finally, plans become real through experiences. Students can discover internships and entry-level jobs, building a resume before graduation. It's available from grades 3 to 12 and continues for alumni, so we support early awareness, high school action, and post-grad follow-through. Families and schools see the same information, which keeps everyone rowing the same direction. School Links is at the very heart of the work of our students, staff, and our parents, and it will be doing this for us as we all map our mission. Let's hear a bit more from our Public Information Officer, Linda Mumusolario, on how we can communicate as clearly as possible about this.
He's very tall. And I'm going to do this once and not on endless loop. So we're going to talk communications. Our role in communications has been to take something as complex as college and career readiness and present it in a way that's clear, approachable, and engaging for students and families. Our work is about ensuring that this approach is understood and also actionable so that every family knows what path is available to them and how their student can move forward. So communications has been the connector in this approach. Our role has been to give map your mission its identity, its language, and its connection to families. And we created the name and the travel/journey theme, and we developed concepts like the digital passport stamps that you saw a little bit about, to help students celebrate their milestones. And then from there, our colleagues across the divisions worked with School Links and other systems to bring those ideas to life in ways that directly serve our students. And together, that collaboration ensures that college and career readiness is not only communicated consistently, but it's also experienced meaningfully across the district. So the strategy has five parts to it, you see on your screen there. Awareness for families, this is the first time that a lot of families have seen college and career readiness explained in a clear, approachable way. And so our goal is to raise awareness, educate staff and families about the eight paths of readiness, and encourage the use of School Links as the tool that supports informed student choices. When it comes to branding, we created the map your mission name and travel theme to reflect the student journey. It reinforces exploration and student ownership, empowering students to chart their own course and to reach a destination that suits them, whether that's college, career, the military service, or another path. As part of this process, we sought feedback not only from our current and past student board representatives, but also from a variety of student groups throughout the year. We took map your mission on a roadshow throughout the district and met with various groups, including the Student Advisory Council. And their input helped shape the design and the concept so that it would truly resonate with our students. We're also using a multi-platform approach to ensure the strategy meets families where they are. It is available on school campuses and online through a dedicated website in explainer videos, which you saw, and digital articles, and through ongoing social media engagement as well. And through connection, communications has worked to embed readiness into school culture so that students don't just hear about it once a year, but that they are reinforced daily in classrooms, hallways, and events, those messages are reinforced. And then finally, assets. We develop tangible tools like posters, flyers, laptop, and water bottle stickers, and digital passport stamps that live in School Links. And these allow students to track and to celebrate milestones in School Links as they move along on their path. So on this screen here, bringing the mission to life, these are examples of bilingual visuals that we created to support this approach. These posters and flyers are displayed in schools in both English and Spanish, ensuring that every family can connect with the message. On the left-hand side there, you see a classroom poster in English with the tagline "Your Future, Your Path, Your Plan", which briefly explains what map your mission is, highlighting how students can choose a path, and mentioning the recognition that they'll receive along the way from digital passport stamps and stickers to badges and other milestones within School Links. This poster also directs families to the district website for more detailed information, and you can currently find them in classrooms, libraries, and cafeterias at our junior high schools and our high schools. So and then on the right side there is a one-page handout or flyer, which you also have in your board folders. The one on the slide is shown in Spanish here, but if you flip it over to the other side, you'll see it also in English. And it outlines the eight college and career readiness paths in more detail. It includes a QR code linking families directly to the website for additional resources. And these visuals are designed to be bright and recognizable, reinforcing the idea that readiness is a journey. And by placing them in classrooms, hallways, and at events, we've made sure that the eight paths are visible in every day, not just during special programs. And this kind of visibility directly supports student agency. When students repeatedly see these paths presented in a clear, accessible way, they begin to recognize that they have real options and that their choices really matter. This slide here includes a graphic that lives on the Modesto City Schools website. It has also been shared with our schools as well. And it shows the eight college and career readiness paths in more detail, starting with the A through G foundational path and including the seven others as well. And for each path, it explains what is required for a student to be considered college and career-ready or prepared by the state. This helps families and students understand not just the names of the paths, but the actual steps and requirements to complete them. Making this information, again, accessible and easy to follow supports student choice. Instead of hearing general terms like A through G or dual enrollment, students and families can see exactly what those paths mean and what it takes to finish them successfully. And that clarity empowers students to make informed decisions about which path is right for them. Communications also partnered with an animation team to create the map your mission explainer video that you saw on endless loop earlier, which was designed to serve as an overview of this framework. And we are now producing 16 pathway videos, eight in English and eight in Spanish. And these videos will highlight each of the eight college and career readiness paths that provide students, staff, and families with a clear understanding of what each path entails and the steps required to complete them. They're designed to be simple, student-friendly, and visually distinct, standing out apart from the typical online content that you would typically see and cutting through some of the noise of social media to capture attention amongst our students and families. And then once complete, the videos will be available on the district and school websites, showcased at key events such as our recent back-to-school nights, and then shared across social media throughout the year. Each video ends with the tagline "Your Future, Your Path, Your Plan", and that consistent message reinforces the idea of student ownership, that students can see their options, understand the steps, and then also feel confident choosing the path that best fits their goals. Families are then directed back to the website for more information and resources, which we plan to update continuously throughout the year. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Ryan Reynolds. He's going to share a little bit more about the early successes that we've already seen with the map your mission framework.
All right. So closing with a few areas to recognize. First, School Links is live at every 7th through 12th grade site. And this isn't a pilot anymore, it is the system. Secondly, every student in grade 7 through 12 now has a personalized... Oops, there we go, oops, somebody else got me. Second, every student in grade 7 through 12 now has a personalized course plan. So counselors and families are working from the same roadmap. And third, we expanded early college opportunities at the high school level, giving more students a real head start on college credit. And finally, we're seeing increased enrollment in AP and IB programs. We widened the on-ramp to rigor while keeping the bar high. While we increased access, both early college and APIB saw increased enrollment. Together, these wins mean better planning, smoother schedules, and more students on a path that fits their goals. Next, we launch map your mission so every family knows the path and knows the milestones. We expand college career readiness into pre-K through 6 to build early momentum and advance early college and CTE with an equity lens. More seats and fewer barriers. We expect to see record numbers in these programs, as well as AP and IB, just as we did last year. We'll strengthen counselor collaboration and data dives so timelines and supports are aligned. We'll promote college career readiness milestones and program achievements so progress is visible. And we'll celebrate the class of 2025 who've already shown strong gains in graduation rates. At this point, I'm happy to turn the presentation back over to the Board President, Mr. Miestis, for public comment.
Whew. Thank you. That was a lot and super informative and really exciting. So I will see if there are any comments from the public on this agenda item.
Von Peterson, CSCA, actually representing one of my members right now. I just got a text as I was sitting here, and she said, "Where's School Links being used? Is it at my child's school?" And she's in junior high and has never heard of School Links and uses college board. Are those the same things? And is the School Links new to the 7th graders? And maybe a little bit more information for those junior high kiddos who might be experiencing it for the first time.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we'll have to wait till one of the board members asks it as a question. So are there any comments from the public? Okay. One more, here we go.
Lisa Camargo, Shekelford Elementary, CSCA. Member. I just have a question.
I just have a question because I love the video. It was great. And I saw that the subtitles were in Spanish, and I'm just wondering if the videos are also going to have other language subtitles on them? That was just my question. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments from the public? All right, we'll move to the board. Comments or questions from the board? We'll start with Trustee Lopez.
Thank you very much, and thank you everyone for the report. I will... I had a couple of questions, but I will ask that we answer the questions that were brought in by the... by our public this evening.
Hey, I could answer the question. This past spring was the first year that junior high kids were onboarded into the system. So many of our students that will be returning this year will be going to the full-year process for the first time in implementation in 7th and 8th grade. Last year was the first year of course planning for seventh graders one year into 8th grade. So this next year, 6th and 7th graders will be able to course plan their junior high map and then map over to high school next. And for the questions you want to answer...
Can I ask a follow-up question or a comment on that? It wasn't until I actually got some... a little bit of training on how to log in for my stu... for my son and then check it. And it's really fabulous, by the way, School Links, but I'm wondering if there can be some clear parent guidelines on being able to create an account for their kid and things like that, if they don't know that it's out there.
One of the big focuses is the new parent Power Hub system, which allows now one sign-on. So if they're able to log in the Power School Power Hub, they should be able to log in to Parents Square, and that's being rolled out this year. So that'll be very powerful so that parents don't have to go to three different claim codes. Like Mr. Reynolds mentioned, they were able to log into each, but I agree, additional training would be required as well.
Okay. Next question.
Regarding the videos, right now, we have them developed in English and in Spanish. However, the English videos, the subtitles on YouTube can be translated into multiple languages, and then that information is also available on our website in great detail, which can also be adapted into a number of different languages as well.
Thank you very much. My questions stem from the AG completion. I know I've been, over the last couple of years, I've been able to, through partnerships in my daily work, I've been able to look at different districts, A through G requirements matched up against their graduation requirements, right? And often, we think that it's this complete world, right? Of difference. And the truth is, most times, it's one or two courses away from A through G, which really begs the question, how come we're not focusing on, you know, those one or two, right? Because it's... there needs to be a greater focus of college and career, right? And so I really appreciate this. With that being said, what type of work are we... because I know that this is one of the areas where we'll have our students that aren't currently at grade level, that aren't reading and reading comprehensive levels, English learners, and other students that, you know, are falling behind, that by the time they get to high school, they aren't at level to be in A through G courses. So for me, what kind of not only campaign, but what kind of systems of support are we looking to embed? I know that this is year one, we're implementing new things. What systems are we seeking to embed so that we can really live this Map Your Mission, that when students come, that A through G is really attainable for our students? And then, sub-question is, what kind of work are we... aside from career tech, as I saw that in the presentation, what work are we doing with our feeder districts so that when our kids come into our district in high school, they're also ready for A through G attainment?
That's a really good question, because we know that transitions from multiple grade levels is huge for our students. I can speak specifically to the transition from 8th grade to 9th grade, because that is a pivotal transition, especially for A through G. Research will show you that about 50% of our students in California are off track after our first semester. And that's not because they're not taking the right coursework. It's actually because they're not getting that C or higher, because all of our students will be in A through G classes their 9th grade year, because the focus there is English and math. But what you're seeing is that students are not at that grade level like you spoke to. So we have a number of different ways that we're supporting that process. We do have our articulation meetings. What that focuses on is our outside feeders, and then also our junior highs that are within Modesto City Schools. We meet on a regular basis. Our first meeting is really going to be highlighting this work and rolling that out to our outside feeder schools as well, talking about what does this really look like for our 8th graders coming into 9th grade? We also have been engaged in California Ed Partners. We are currently in our fourth year, in our fourth cohort. The main focus of that work is helping our 8th graders transition to 9th grade and to help them remain on track. The really, I guess, cool thing about California Ed Partners is that you have people from district office, you have site administrators, you have teachers, and you have counselors. So it's a really great hub of a variety of different perspectives to talk about not only, like, how do we make that transition smooth, but how do we prepare them to be successful in those courses? So a lot of great work is happening through California Ed Partners. It is small pockets of it that we will work towards scaling on our campuses, but, you know, it addresses grading practices, it addresses, you know, PLC process, and just how to keep students on track. So a lot of work is happening there. We will be expanding that articulation work to our elementaries as well. We have not yet done a systematic approach to that, but that's part of this Map Your Mission as well.
Thank you very much for that response. And I look forward, and as this progresses, that we start to implement some of our graduation requirements to reflect the work that's being done through this initiative. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Irvin.
Yes. One of my questions is similar to Trustee Lopez in that since we are going all the way back, I guess, to the 3rd grade and eventually PK, how are we monitoring students to ensure that they're on track to be able to effectively transition into A through G requirements, rather than going in already behind if they transition from 8th grade to 9th grade, but they're already behind somewhere within their academic development? So how do we greater ensure that our students are prepared once that transition happens, as prepared as possible once that transition happening, so they're not really set up for, and I'm not going to say failure, but not being able to complete the A through G requirements? And question two, I noticed that the work-based learning is identified for students with IEPs. Now, I know students that have went through schools with IEPs, they got bachelor's degrees, got master's degrees. So why would we limit work-based learning to students with IEPs? And then the third question I have is, what about entrepreneurship as a part of the scheme of things? I ran into 2024 buyer graduates who have a business and is doing really, really well, but I don't see anything that encourages that creativity, you know? Is that through CTE? Or how do we encourage entrepreneurship and everybody not get tracked, okay, career, career readiness, or, you know, college? You know, that may be, you know, something that may be on the horizon, but immediately they want to go into business. So how do we spurn that creativity within our students? You know, as a business owner, I would have loved to have that opportunity back in high school. But I just wanted to point that out because those are options that students think about all the time. You got... we got students out there that have their own little barber shops out of their garage, you know, that do social media stuff as a business, you know? What do you call those? Digital creators, you know? These are all entrepreneurial endeavors. So I just wanted to know if that's a possibility, to institute something like that. And that's all I have. Great presentation. And like I said, I'm looking forward to seeing how we transition and develop the Map Your Mission. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to take on question one. So question one had to do with, how are we ensuring that our students are prepared for the level of rigor of an A through G course? And if we... if you remember back in Slide 5 of the presentation, you'll see that the MCS vision is really anchored around solid instruction, and we use that as the instructional core. And we've heard several reports to this board over the last several years about our roadmap for what instruction, good instruction, looks like in the classroom. That's how we're going to make sure that kids are prepared for the level of rigor that they need to be at, is making sure that tier-one instruction, that very first time they get instruction, that it's solid and that they're engaged in that learning. And then, part of that, as we hear through School Links, is they're more engaged when they have a plan and they have a purpose and they have a vision of where they want to go. So having that mindset of, oh, I filled out, you know, this interest survey, I'm looking at this as a career, oh, I see how this course and my learning relates directly to my success in that endeavor. So I think those two things really pair to help prepare them to be successful in a college-level course, is good first instruction, and then also them engaged in a plan where they feel like they have voice and choice in that. I'm going to turn it over to Mark for the second question.
I think it was the second. It may have been the third, but I'm going to go with the student with disability question. Agree wholeheartedly. It is not designed at all to lump the entirety of students with disabilities into work-based learning. We have students through the IEP process, and they're usually students with more significant impairments, about 1% of our population, who work toward a certificate of completion. That is functional in nature. They're working on eventual goals of maybe supported living or trying to live independently. They're working on goals of self-care and things like that, but we're really talking about a small segment of the big group that is students with disabilities.
And question number three. I'm impressed that we're getting all the way around the horn here. Our entrepreneurship. We have CTE pathways in Modesto City Schools that address business. We have, as an example, an award-winning or an award-winning student at Gregory that this summer competed and was recognized as an entrepreneur. So to, I guess, to your question, it's embedded in the CTE pathway work, but it is not one of the indicators, meaning there isn't an entrepreneurship indicator outside of completing the CTE pathway. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Student Board Rep Garcia.
Yeah, I actually just had a comment. I had a list of questions, but your guys' presentation was really fantastic and cleared all of those. I really appreciated your approach on this not being a one-track thing, and so it opens up a lot of opportunities for students. And even in the last few weeks of school, my teachers have been using Map Your Mission and have been using it in classrooms, and we've been doing some surveys on, like, the self-identity aspect of it, and so I think that's definitely really helpful. I also really like how you guys had a little bit of, like, an alumni element being incorporated into Map Your Mission, and I think that a lot of students are definitely going to benefit and appreciate this. And I loved that you guys had opportunities locally for students to get involved. I think community service is a great place for students to get involved. So I just wanted to say, great presentation.
Thank you. Trustee Daly.
Thank you. Great. I agree. Great presentation. I do have some concerns. I'm curious if there are any long-term studies which indicate this is the best option for students, primarily in reference to mental health, because personally and professionally, probably over the last, I would say, two years, I personally have received an extreme increase in concerns from primarily high school students that are completely stressed and hovering on anxiety because of the push on their future. So that's... are we looking at the mental health ramifications? Because it seems to me, when you look at this, we're looking more at top-down. Yes, we're going all the way down to 3rd grade, but it's still top-down. What's your future going to look like? And that's exactly what's going to cause anxiety in almost anybody. So we need to kind of look at also focusing on today, because you can't build a house from the roof down. You have to have a strong foundation. If you have a crack in the foundation, then the whole house is going to go down. So the issue that I see is that we need to ensure that our youngest learners are actually at grade level, because studies do indicate that those individuals who know how to read by 3rd grade are going to do better in school. And we cannot say at Modesto City Schools that we're there yet.
I would respond to that and say, I think we're closer in agreement than you might think. This is about creating connections for students at the earliest grade levels so that they can see the relevance about why education is important to them. It's about personalizing the conversations. It's about encouraging and providing access for all students at the earliest levels so that the conversation about their future doesn't sneak up on them as a freshman in high school, when they're already maybe struggling academically, but to see the relevance for them. It is not a one-track approach for students. It's about creating awareness of all of the options that are available to them, both academically, whether that's CTE, or AP, or IB, the highest rigor to other opportunities for identifying preparedness for after high school. I really think it's about creating relevance for students so that they have the agency in making those decisions for themselves about what the future holds for them, and so that they have the access to those options when they get to their junior and their senior years. The challenge we have now is when those things happen for students, when they're 16, 17, 18 years old, if that foundation hasn't been built, then many doors are closed or nearly closed, and it's much harder for them, and that creates stress. So... And we do monitor social, emotional, mental health, and I would say that we probably have as much or more access to services now than we ever have in Modesto City Schools. And we're consistently monitoring that data to see, you know, where do we need more services? Where are students accessing? So...
All right. Thank you. Trustee Brown.
Yes, I appreciate the fact that this is something for all students. And my question that I wanted to bring forward has already been addressed, but I just want you to know that I'm going to be watching closely to see how our most vulnerable special ed students are responding to opportunities that come to them through this. So I'd like to make sure that in future reports, we hear something about progress that we're seeing with that population. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Dr. Petrago.
Thank you, Board President Maestas. If we were to go back to Slide 5, I think what is so important about that slide is that it... it's a visual representation of our recognition that plans for the future don't happen in isolation, right? So when we talk to students about, you know, what the future looks like, we're also looking or leveraging the instructional core to ensure that they have the skills and the knowledge that they need to actually achieve their dreams, right? And so we're starting from the very, very beginning, because instructional core isn't just 7 through 12, right? Like, that starts from day one when they enter our system. Like that, that starts from day one when they enter our system. And so we recognize that it, it really starts with ensuring that our students access high-quality instructional programming, high-quality instruction, high-quality curriculum, and just experiences that will prepare them to thrive and to, to reach whatever goals they have that ultimately are kind of reflected in Map Your Mission, right? Similarly, with Be the Change, again, this is all contextual, right? None, none of this happens in isolation. With Be the Change, I think what we're striving to, to get to is a place where students feel that they have a sense of agency and that their voice matters, right? And that they're a part of the work that, that happens in schools. And it's not just education is happening to them, right? But that they're part of that experience. One of the things that I appreciated about our student board reps earlier in their report is that, you know, they want to be able to really engage and be the change, right? And that effort so that students can find their why. And I think it's important for us to help students arrive at their why, right, early on. Because their why doesn't have to be, I want to be a doctor, I want to be an engineer. Their why could be, I want to be a good human. I want to make a difference in the world, right? I want to contribute to society. I want to be healthy. And so I think it's just important to, to clarify that these three elements are part of a, of a greater whole.
All right, thanks. Vice President Mejia.
Yeah, I, I agree with a lot of the comments that have been said before in many different ways. But I do, I do like the presentation. I do like that it, that we have, that it's there, that we have a plan, that, that we have like a foundation. And I know we have 30,000 students. And then sometimes when we talk about, we talk about anecdotal, like one or two students. I mean, we've got to think about 30,000 students. And, and, and then they're, they're in different pathways. They're in different stages when they arrive to the United States. And I always have that lens, you know? There's, there's kids that have been, you know, just arrived last year. There's kids that arrived like five years ago. There's some of us kids that arrived maybe like, you know, 20-some years ago, right? There's, there's, we're just in different stages. That we have a plan that also incorporates parents. I think that's going to be key, that's going to be key. I'm not saying that we're not going to find a lot of ways to improve and, and different things. And I think that's part of a plan. Like if a plan was perfect, I don't think we would, we were ever start anything because there's always lots of learnings that need to take place. I agree with a lot of what's been said about, you know, there's going to be different things that we learn along the way, as long as we are capturing that information and making changes. And then also capturing those students that are like needing additional support in the mental health part. I mean, there's just different. But I do think, like, if we have, it's better to have opportunities for students and, and then they take advantage of it than not to have a, a plan. And I think that A through G is key for that to have, all students have access to it. Because, I mean, I don't want to put us on blast. When I was, I don't think, so, when we're, some of us were in high school, we, that was an emphasis. And I think it is important to have it there for the students that are there. I'm always of the firm believer that it's better to be prepared and not needed than, than needed and not having prepared. So there's a lot of components. And I hope that we take this with, there's lots of learnings that we need to take place. And, and along the way, we hopefully are, we are adjusting and tweaking and doing things to make some of these pathways and these components stronger. And I think the English learner components, and I know we, we have a robust team working on some of that. So I feel like, I think that we're cooperating at third grade, I think is super important. And of course, with the core, you know, being also a TK, you know, a home or all the other stuff that's happening prior to even students joining school is going to be very, very important. But just, wanted to just kind of put those things. But I do have lots of those questions. And we're not going to all address them now, but it's the beginning. And I appreciate the plan and I appreciate all the work you have put in. Thank you.
All right, trustee Marx.
Oh, thank you. I thought, wow, behind you, I don't know if you're going to see me, but thank you.
I got you, I got you.
You did, thank you, Abel. So I, I liked hearing this. I saw this rolled out a little bit last year in Parents Leading Change. And it went over really well. Just being for parents to see how they can participate in, in talking to their students about what their future is going to look like. What do they want, what are they interested in? I mean, just identifying those things, just like tonight. You know, when we hear the students that give the pledge and how they say, you know, oh, I want to be a doctor or writer, or, you know, and just being able to have that idea. So what does that look like? And how, what kind of classes are you going to need to take? And can you do both? Like you said, President Miestis, can you do both? You know, be a writer and a doctor. Doctors have to write a lot. And so, but it may not be creative writing. So it's just being able to say, how can we do that? And I, I liked how, you know, this connects the counselors, the families, and the parents in all of those decisions. And then also, the way this is, this new Map Your Plan, Map Your Mission, wait, Map Your Mission? All right, sorry. Map, Map Your Future, Map Your, sorry, I can't remember the name. Map Your Mission, that's what it is. It's M Y N. So Map Your Mission. So as they look to that, it, it identifies for a teacher where a student might be, there's a gap in their education in making sure that they're going to be able to get to the next level that they want to get to. And so I like how that helps drill down to what's missing in this student's education. They might be great at the artwork, but they might be, you know, just struggling in English or struggling in math. And how can we help them, you know, come up to that level and, and move them up in a better way? So I like how it's helping us identify and helping those working with our students identify these things and then being able to move them forward. So just appreciate, you know, the thought that went into this, the, you know, going to the students, asking them, what do you think this should look like? And, and, you know, how you rolled it out. I think it's been really good, a little at a time. And then now this year is like the full implementation. And I'm glad that it's, you know, going to the younger grades, just to be able to ask them to start thinking. Because when I was out on the SARB board, the School Attendance Review Board, just how we would ask the students, what are you, what are you interested in? Because they were missing a lot of school. That's why they were there. And finding out, oh, I'm really interested in cars. Or, oh, I'm really interested in horses. Just something that connects them to their future. And how can we do that? And when they do that, I was talking to another school board member in another area, but they found out that when they connected their, their future, a idea of what they want to do with education, they were more inspired to come to school every day. Their attendance rates went up. Their participant, participant rates went up. Their grades went up. Their test scores went up. And so I know that when they see that connection, I know this is going to happen. So this was a great report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I, I don't have much more to say. This, you, you guys all, you guys all said it. I do want to say that I was, I share a few, like a little concerns about the wellbeing of our, our kids, having taught a lot of AP students and seeing the stress that they have when they have five AP classes. And it's just like, I have to do zero period. I have to do this to get there. And, and they get, they get overwhelmed. So my, my only question and concern would be, which I think you alleviated most of it, is that this is less about putting a kid's on a track, which is what I was really fearful of, was tracking. But giving them, opening a door and still letting them dream and be kids. Like if we can just make sure that we still let them be kids and dream, then giving them focus is, is, is nice too. So that's, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much. This was a very robust report. So thank you so much. We appreciate it. Okay. We got another great report here on Modesto City Schools Hispanic Youth Leadership Clubs. Yes. I was going to, I, I see it coming over there. We'll take five. Yes, we can. We'll take five.
Vibration. Here? Hand it to you, okay. I got you.
You got one minute. Thank you.
I'll make some trade that you guys are like, "How did he get that?"
We were just talking about that, right? Yeah. All right, we'll bring us back and we'll start on item B5, which is a report on Modesto City Schools Hispanic Youth Leadership Clubs. Mr. Patterson.
Good afternoon, Board President Maestas, Superintendent Butrago, trustees, and cabinet members. My name is Will Patterson. I'm the Equity and Intervention Specialist for Modesto City Schools, and I have the pleasure of reporting on Modesto City Schools and the Hispanic Youth Leadership Clubs. The purpose of this presentation is to provide a brief history of Hispanic Youth Leadership Clubs, share information on last year's accomplishments, update, provide updates on this year's efforts, hear from some community partners, HYLC president, and HYLC advisors, and then highlight the next steps. With everything, our collective why is the MCS vision that every student graduate with the knowledge, skills, and character traits essential to thrive and contribute to society. And this directly lines with Goal 1 and Goal 3: increase and maintain academic achievement and equitable access to enable all students to attain college and career readiness and assure a safe, welcoming, and respectful learning environment for every member of our school community while ensuring effective district-wide communication for students, staff, family, and partnerships. And I feel like Goal 1 and Goal 2 directly tie into what makes the HYLC's clubs very, very special. They tie into the fact that they push college and career readiness as a club and hold each other accountable while they're in that club, while pushing a safe environment for students to be a part of. One of the things I've heard just recently was how students that are transitioning from 7th and 8th going up to high school look forward to having a place where they feel welcomed, and a lot of times, that's the HYLC club. So a brief history of the HYLC clubs with Modesto City Schools is they, we had active HYLCs at various, over various years, at different sites, but not every site had a club. In 2023-24, Modesto City Schools partnered with City Ministry Network to increase the HYLCs and provide a consistent experience for our students, focused on leadership, consistency in topics, themes, and experiences. This year, I'm happy to say, every 7 through 12 site has an HYLC. With approximately, right around, 400 students total that are a part of those clubs. These are just some of the focus areas that City Ministry Network has been focusing on with our HYLC clubs. Their partnership has been amazing and helping us move forward. Career awareness, clubs host guest speakers for a variety of career fields. Cultural awareness, learning and participating in events and activities focused on Latino and Hispanic history and culture. And one of the, going to a lot of these different clubs, one of the things I love to see is, it's for all students. They are very, very welcoming. So it's not just for Hispanic students, but it's focused on their culture and history. So anybody can come in there and learn. Leadership development, students lead events and activities within the clubs, participating in peer-to-peer support. Service to the community, students organize and participate in learning and service learning projects on campus and in their communities. Social activities, clubs plan social events. Encouraging education, club members are encouraged to finish high school and continue with a higher education. So this is just a slide with some of the last year's efforts that we had with our HYLC clubs. One of them was a leadership conference that we did for the first time, which is called Fueling Passion, where we invited 10 students from our HYLC, our BSUs and our NAMI, and we had different speakers come in to teach them about leadership. Our Hispanic Educational Conference. We had two college tours last year for our students. One was to the University of Pacific, and another was to a college fair out in Sacramento. Also, the Boys of Color Summit that John Irvin and Marvin had put on, and it was a great turnout where we had entrepreneurs that came out to speak to students. We had some police officers that came out and spoke to the students and things like that. The female police officer had the most questions of anybody during that whole thing with a room full of boys. So it was, it was a very, very interesting experience. And then we had an end-of-the-year field trip. Also, City Ministry Network, they put on workshops with the leadership teams from the HYLC clubs. So this is this year's events, and because last year, it was my first year, and I was able to support and help, but we were not aligned how we wanted to be. This year, I feel like we're going to be so much more aligned because I was able to meet with all the advisors at the beginning of the year, and we created an HYLC calendar of events for the year. So we have a calendar with everything that we're going to be doing throughout the year. It's shown on the side right now. Some of the, we're going to continue some of the work that we did last year, and with having the leadership conference for Fueling Passion, which is coming up, the Hispanic Educational Conference will still be going on. This year, I'll show you on a next slide how we've expanded the HYLC college tour from, from the students and staff asking for that. The HYLC dance that we had this year. Last year, we had a dance, and it was only at Johansson. This year, it's a collaborative effort where every HYLC will be selling tickets for the event at Johansson, and they will be able to take that money and use it towards their HYLC clubs. Also, we will be having the Boys of Color Summit also again this year. So when it comes to the HYLC college tour this year, I'm in talks right now, they're working on the schedule for it, but we're going to be doing five HYLC college tours this year. All of the trips will take place on a Saturday. They will visit three, two to three colleges per trip, okay? And this is going to be for 100 students from their clubs. So this is just the beginning framework of it. These are all the colleges that all of the advisors, when we just met, decided that they wanted to visit and take their students to. So we're going to be very, very busy and moving around, but it's going to be an amazing time. So these are the schools that we will be going on the HYLC college tour this year. Now, I can sit up here and ramble and talk to you guys all day, but I think it's way better that you guys hear from the people that are putting in the work on the grounds with me. First, I would like to bring up Carlos Gonzalez from City Ministry Network.
Good evening, Superintendent Butrago, President Maestas, trustees, and cabinet members. My name is Carlos Gonzalez. I am the HYLC Program Director for City Ministry Network. And on behalf of City Ministry Network, I would like to express our gratitude towards you for your continued partnership and also support towards our students. I also can't get up here and not recognize our advisors, who are our superstars, who are rock stars, who are spending the time, the effort to invest in our students. And as I call them, they don't know I call them this, but they're like Alfred to Batman, if you get the reference. I want to, I just want to share a few sto, I want to just share a few stories with you. I want to talk about Aravella, a freshman, who, as a senior, used her voice and her brush to share with a group of people about changes she wants to see in her community. She participated in our speech contest and also our art contest, and was able to get a prize for being part of that. Also want to share about a sophomore named Fatima, who was able to organize her club to go after school, I mind, after school, and share with the club at Mark Twain, and just work towards that bridge between junior high and high school. I want to share about a junior named David, who this year is the club president, his club's president, who wrote actually a children's book. And I know that the support of his club and his community was just awesome. And the last thing I want to share with you is about a senior named Michelle, who in front of mayors and city council members and community leaders, used her voice to passionately share about her desire to change her community, and she was actually our speech contest winner last year. So I just want to share these stories because your support allows us as City Ministry Network to partner with other leadership, with other organizations, with other community members, to bring in different, different things to support our students, to partner and bring in funding to help them, to, to, you know, let them win a prize for, for their speech and art contests, to allow them to do community service, to allow them to bring, to bring even scholarships to help students graduating. So the last thing I want to share with you is, because of your continued partnership, last year, we were able to take a group of Mark Twain and Hanshaw middle schoolers during summer to Stan State. And there's a, there's a TikTok that they created about, "What am I going to do after high school?" And it's, "Go to college," and it was, it was just great. So this year, because of your, because of your partnership and because of your support, we're able to expand, not, not just, not just being Mark Twain and Hanshaw, but also be at La Loma and be at Roosevelt. And I'm just thankful for, for the opportunity and for the trust that you have given us and for allowing us to work with Will so closely. And we're just very thankful for that. And now I just want to give the time to some students from HYLC in Johansson.
He's tall. Hello all, thank you so much for having us here. My name is Micaela Gajiola. I am the Activities Director for HYLC at Johansson High School.
Hi, good evening, my name is Anya Giard. I am the Vice President for HYLC at Johansson High School.
Unfortunately, our president could not be here today due to her being an athlete. She's amazing, we love her. But on behalf of her, we are here to represent the speech that she wrote and prepared for today.
Al entrar en la escuela secundaria, como la mayoría de los estudiantes de primer año estaba perdida, y buscando un lugar al que llamar hogar. Una comunidad donde pudiera ser yo misma y prosperar, pero no sabía que estaba a punto de encontrar el mejor hogar y comunidad imaginable. Durante mi primer festival de club en la escuela secundaria Johansson, recuerdo haber caminado hasta el puesto de Chelsea con mi hermano, que era oficial, y haber escuchado la música a todo volumen con los miembros del club bailando frente del puesto, sonriendo. Inmediatamente sentí un orgullo en el pecho mientras los veía. La semana siguiente fue, fue la primera reunión del club, y el orgullo de mi pecho volvió mientras estaba sentada allí escuchando al presidente explicar los eventos que íbamos a tener, tener a largo del año. Como posadas, la Semana de Herencia Hispana, y el baile de Chelsea, y el resto de es historia. Me enamoré del club no solo por lo feliz que me hizo, sino por lo conectado que me hizo sentir con mi familia y la gente que me rodeaba. Me encantan la sensación de alegría que me da durante cada evento de Chelsea, y la sensación de orgullo que aborruma mi cuerpo mientras estoy rodeada de mi gente y mi cultura. Estoy muy agradecida a Chelsea por hacer que me experiencia en la escuela secundaria, y mi vida se sienta más brillante. Y nunca olvidaré lo que me ha enseñado y nunca avergonzarme de quién soy, de donde vengo. Y siempre, nunca te rindas, never give up.
I prepared a little something myself as well, just explaining the ups and downs that I had with HYLC. As a senior, looking back at my HYLC journey, it's been a roller coaster. Freshman year, I was all in, every meeting, every event. I loved it. Then came sophomore and junior year. Life got complicated, things got tough, and honestly, HYLC took a backseat for me. Although HYLC took a backseat, I've always been very involved in my school community with being a cheerleader. Even when I wasn't involved, the values and the connections I made during my first year stuck with me. Now, as I'm going into my senior year, I realize how much HYLC has shaped me as a person. Today, it's shaped me as a person today. Even though it was only one year, it taught me leadership, teamwork, and the importance of the community giving me the guidance to become varsity cheer captain and now an HYLC officer. So to all, especially younger members, embrace every opportunity HYLC offers. It's more valuable than you might think and stays with you no matter where life takes you. It's more than a club, it is a home. Nunca te rindas, never give up. Thank you.
Good night, right? My name is Diana Gonzalez. I am one of the Spanish teachers at Gregory High School, and I am a co-advisor for HYLC at Gregory as well.
Hi, my name is Claudia Nariz. I am co-advising with Diana Gonzalez. I teach Spanish as well, and this is my third year advising the club. It's my second year doing it with Diana. I did it the first year, and I'm not going to lie to you. I was like, "This is not a good idea." I was overwhelmed. And I know Carlos was helping me, and he was like, "Oh, we can do it better, we can do it better." And I came to the idea, I was like, "I need help here." So I asked Diana Gonzalez to co-advice with me. Last year, it was way better than the first year, and I feel like this year is going amazing. It's only been, I think it's like the fifth week of school, and we have so many ideas and plans for the year. I know William Patterson is bringing a lot of money that it's helping us to, you know, take the kids to college tours. And for us at Gregory, I feel like the goal that we have is, it's a 55% of students are Hispanics, but we don't see the culture in there. I know, I know that you know what I'm talking about. So I feel like our goal is to just bring representation and, you know, provide like the students like a vision of, "We Hispanics, we can do it, we can go to college, we can get a degree, we can get a master's, we can get a diploma as, as females." And nothing against males, you know? But I feel like we can just put a face, especially in the girls, you know, at that age too. And I feel like the, just creating a culture where representing the Hispanic culture at Gregory, that we're missing that part there.
I would like to share the HYLC pledge because that is exactly the reason why I do all this work extra with, with the students. I promise to uphold the ideals of the Hispanic Youth Leadership Clubs in my relationships with my family, school, and community. I will make every effort to maintain pride in my heritage, to succeed in all and all my endeavors, and to honor the commitments that I make. Nunca te rindas, never give up. For me, it was also a matter of representation. I wanted the students to, to believe that they could do it, that there was people that looked like them that actually did it. I needed them to be exposed to the college experience as well. I didn't have anybody, as a, as a second language learner, to take me on college trips. My mom, my parents don't know, like, "What do you mean?" You know? So this year, visiting 14 colleges and all of the wonderful things that we planned a couple of weeks ago, which was great, by the way, that Mr. Patterson included us in the, in the planning of all of the things happening HYLC. Super proud to be working with Prof. Nariz and to be representing Gregory, to be representing my heritage, you know, my community, and all of the wonderful things that we will be doing. Thank you so much.
They keep getting on tall people. Ooh, y'all short. Okay, so, so I, I want to just lay out some of the next steps that we're going to be doing. We're going to strengthen our community and business partnerships. We're going to continue to provide advisor support and training, highlight student impact to leadership. And this is the big one right here. We're going to begin to placing students in an MTSS module to track the data. So we want to track the success, the success of the students that are in the HYLC clubs. And with that, I'll pass it back over to President Maestas.
Excellent, thank you for that wonderful report. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to make any comments on this agenda item? All right, seeing none. Any comments or questions from the board? We'll start with Trustee Irvin.
Yes, great report. Man, it's, it's great to see the, the morphing, so to speak, of HYLC. Like I said, I had a history with HYLC back when I was with HLC. Actually was president of HLC under Yamalat. And so I would go to the Boy Scout facility over there where all the county HYLCs would show up for their meeting there, monthly meetings down there. But it's, it's great to see that you have plateaued, you know, not plateaued, but got to the next level, the next level of leadership amongst our young people. It's great to see the things that are happening with HYLC and the direction that it's going. And the new, you know, the college tours. I would just make one suggestion, that maybe if you could slide in a couple of technical education schools. I know, you know, we want all of our students to, to go to college. We college graduates, but we know the reality of things that there's different pathways. We talked about different pathways and the map your mission. And so if we can be in alignment with, there's some possibilities with, with technical, technical schools out there as well. So again, I, great report. I'm glad to see the partnership with City Ministry Network and the, the great work that they're doing is, is connecting. You know, that was one of the things that, that kind of happened is that things weren't connecting before. And so now things are connecting. All the HYLCs are connected, you know? And that's a great thing. And keep up the great work. And you advisors, thank you because I know the sacrifices you make, you know? And it's much appreciated. And so I'm glad to have you. Thank you, again.
All right, Trustee Davy. Trustee Davy.
I agree with Trustee Irvin. It's wonderful to see the support that the students have for these things and the fact that there's an increase in the colleges that they get a go-to. I'm kind of curious because one of the slides says, "One of the goals is cultural awareness." Culture in the Hispanic community is highly faith-based, typically speaking, yet there are no faith-based universities on the list. So I was, I'm kind of curious as to the reason for that.
Well, all the schools we chose to go to were the schools that the advisors voted on to go to.
All right, Trustee Lopez.
Thank you very much, and thank you so much for the report. I usually don't like, you know? HYLC holds, holds, you know, dear and near to my, to my upbringing and the work that I get to do now, to the advisors. Hang in there. I, as, as a, as someone that works a full job and then, you know, has, gets to do a work outside of that job, I know how hard it is, but I can definitely tell you that it, it bears fruit. You know, because I, I've seen the work that HYLC has done in myself and in other, and other students that went to school with me, after me. You know, I was, the work that, that now, I mean, we see HYLC from the lens of Modesto City Schools, but, you know, they have, City Ministry has a whole network outside of Modesto as well that they're, they're bringing along into this work. And so we hope that Modesto City Schools is that, is that modeled school district for other, for other HYLC districts to, to follow, right? And so really appreciate of the work. I, I see that you guys changed the council I, I see that you guys changed the council to club on there, but the, the statement and the mission is the same. So really, really proud of the work that you all are doing.
All right, Student Board Rep Tor.
Okay, excellent presentation, thank you so much, and really appreciate the stories as well. Just a quick anecdote from Modesto High and the HLC program there. One of the members who has since graduated, she hosted a Hispanic Heritage Night at Modesto High. And then the funds generated from that event, they were formed into three scholarships. So $500, one, $200, and $100 that went to Hispanic students, Hispanic students could apply for it. So that really just speaks to how enriching and, I think, transformative that this club can be on, at Moheys Campus, and definitely as we heard from other campuses too, so thank you for your work.
Great, Trustee Brown.
Yes, I appreciate all the great things that we're hearing tonight and the great presentation. I want to just mention how much I appreciate the fact that we have emphasis on the young men of color. My concern is, I've been a board member, is that we've seen advancement of young women in leadership from all ethnic backgrounds rising faster than we see the young men rising to the occasion. And so I, I want to just give a shout out for the attention that you're giving for that group of young men that need that encouragement and support to keep up with girls.
We got a long ways to go with that, so.
I know, it's a constant, constant battle, we've always got to work on that, don't we? But Will, and Marvin, and John, and all of you that are involved in that, that focus, I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, Vice President Mejia.
Yeah, I'm a little, I guess I'm a little biased as well, I mean, I just wanna, great presentation, I just wanna congratulate, I know I see some familiar, a familiar face that I, that I worked in the past with. So I'm really happy to see that you're, you're hanging in there and that you're doing, but you are making a, a big, a big impact, a big difference, you don't know how much. It's just, sometimes you're, you're probably like the only, sometimes the only resource to like higher ed or other careers that some of the students have had. And so that's, that's amazing to see. So I, I do believe representation does matter, I think culture does matter. And the reason why I, I'm sitting up there, up here, has to do a lot with those investments early on and people that believed in you in high school. I was part of HLC in high school, but then over the investment, over, over time. And those seeds that some of these advisors plant and coworkers, and I know Adolfo doesn't want, didn't say it today, but that's how I met Adolfo and I kind of, we get to work together when he was in high school. And so you don't know where life is gonna take you, so I just know that every investment is, is a future in our leadership. And I see some of these young ladies are, one day, I was, we were just saying up here, that one day will be either running the school district or, or sitting up here in the dais and doing that. So I'm, I'm really proud of the work, congratulate, I know there's a whole team behind it, I know Carlos and everybody that works on, on, in the background. That sometimes, you know, they don't see, but I appreciate all the advisors, I know they're, they're listening to this, maybe just give them a shout out and show them some love all the time, you know, to, as they continue to be in late, like nine o'clock after they have to go to work tomorrow. So I, I really appreciate you, and thank you for all your work, great presentation.
All right, Trustee Irvin.
I just want to say the last thing. So for five years, when I was a member of HLC, I used to deliver, every year, HLC used to do a program during Black History Month. And it was designed to bridge those cultural connections. And, and basically the theme was, we have more in common than we have differences. And so I will be willing to offer my services again, if you need that. I used to do that program every year during Black History Month for HLC during the cluster meetings that they used to have back then. So we want to continue, I volunteer.
Trustee Marks.
Yes, this was awesome to see and hear all this happening. I, when I was a member of HLC and seeing, you know, being asked to try to see if we could get at different high schools, get HLC, it was such a struggle and, you know, there was just something missing, and we really needed that piece. And I see that it was City Ministry Network that could come in and, you know, just connect all the schools together, connect this vision and have that, new ideas to be able to help, and then help the advisors, because that was the hardest part, is that it's a huge load to carry. And then to have City Ministry Network come on and, and come along and help them, you know, with all the, just planning and all the ideas and then bringing at each school together, the camaraderie that takes place because of that, the collaboration. Just seeing that happening in the community is really awesome, but I love seeing this, I know our students are benefiting already, and I know there's gonna be so many more future students, but we'll be as passionate as you are about it, and maybe they'll come back and be teachers and be advisors in this program, and even get on the school board, just like some of our, our students that were there before are here now. So I just love that, I think it's neat just being able to come, come around to this point. So yeah, great presentation, love all that you shared and all that you told tonight, so thank you.
All right, okay, yeah, I don't have much more to say, everyone said it all, amazing work. Thank you, everybody from the community, thank you, all those who are putting in so much time and effort into our students, because our students definitely deserve it. And definitely, I was that kid also, that it was like, what's college? And my parents didn't, didn't really help me with that as much. So I had to have people in school to be able to help me get there. So I'm glad that there are people like you there for our, our children. So thank you so much for that report, and, and thank you for your good work. Yeah, I'll give you a hand, great job, guys. Yeah, feel free, you don't want to hear anything about our unallocated budget approvals. All right, this will bring us to B6, our public hearing and approval of resolution numbers 252609 and 252610, authorizing filing of application for the State Allocation Board Administered Programs and Designation of Authorized District Representatives. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So we will now close the regular open board meeting. And we will now open the public hearing of all the stuff I just said. Hand it over to Mr. Zerly.
Thank you, President Meestis, good evening, trustees. We have completed and will complete many projects that include science classroom renovations, new cafeterias, modernization, athletic complex renovations and additions and other facility upgrades. The State of California's Office of Public School Construction requires the board to hold a public hearing and approve the resolutions to allow funding flexibility to apply for state-funded programs administered by the State Allocation Board and Department of General Services. Approval of these resolutions will allow us to submit applications for funding for multiple school sites and designate specific district representatives to sign and submit the documents on behalf of the district. There's no fee associated with these resolutions. The resolutions will accompany our applications that could generate eligibility for future state grant funding for our capital projects under Proposition 2. It is recommended that the Board of Education, following the public hearing, to receive public comments, approve resolutions numbers 2526-09 and 2526-10, authorizing the filing of applications for the State Allocation Board Administered Programs and designating authorized district representatives.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zerly, are there any comments from the public on this agenda item? Are there comments and, or questions from the board? All right, we'll now close the public hearing and reconvene the regular board meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve resolution numbers 2526-09 and 2526-10, authorizing, I gotta read the whole thing, man. But I'll take it, authorizing filing of applications for the State Allocation Board Administered Programs and Designation of Authorized District Representatives.
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
Moved by Trustee Brown, who had their hand up, and seconded by Trustee Irvin. Okay, we'll do a roll, roll call vote. Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Daly.
Aye.
Trustee Irvin.
Aye.
Trustee Lopez.
Aye.
Trustee Marks.
Aye.
Vice President Mejia.
Aye.
President Meestis, aye. Student Board Rep Juliana Garcia.
Aye.
Student Board Rep Sabrina Tor.
Aye.
This motion carries unanimously. Move us on to our approval of unaudited financial statements for 2425, Mr. Zerly.
Yes, good evening again, President Meestis, I will wait for the, there we go, thank you. Wait for the presentation to come up, and I just want to highlight two people in the audience that had a lot to do with this report that I'm about ready to share with you. Director of Business Services, Kim Camstra, and our Director of Internal Audits, Matthew Castanon. Purpose of this presentation will be to provide details for our 2425 unaudited actuals financial report. What this does is it'll, this will be a summary that compares our estimated actuals versus our unaudited actuals, and then subsequent budget changes for the current year, 2526, that we've had to make since the June budget adoption. As you, as you've heard multiple times tonight and, and with every one of our presentations, this is our collective why, or, or Modesto City Schools' vision, and our budget must support this vision that every student graduates with the skills, knowledge, and character traits essential to thrive and contribute to society. Also, our strategic goal for ensuring the district is fiscally and operationally sound, that strategic goal was, was crafted and implemented specifically for, for our budget and our, our financial system. Our annual financial cycle is July 1 to June 30. And until June 30, we're reporting and adjusting the budget. We adopt the budget in, in June for July 1, and then we adjust that three times a year, first interim, second interim, and our estimated actuals based on current projections and assumptions. This slide is a summary of our district's unrestricted any fund balance, as projected in May. That's the first column, it says estimated actuals, and the actuals now that we've gone through the summer and, and closed the books, as they say. We now have our unaudited actuals in the second column, and then the difference, or the variance between the two. We operate, our budget is assumptions, and it is changes based on what we know at that point in time, but we know that we never spend 100% of our budget resources, we would not want to do that, just like probably your, your home, your home budget, and so there's always gonna be a variance. But it's at this point in time that we have to show our financial transparency to our labor partners, to the community, and, and say, okay, why was it different, good or bad, from what we last thought in May? And so our, we had a projected deficit in June of $19.3 million. A deficit is, is when we spend more, when we send more than we take in. And a lot of times it's planned, in, in many cases, because we're spending one-time funds. And so we know that there was a planned deficit, and, and actually, our unaudited actuals is better. We still had a deficit of $10.2 million, but that was an improvement of $9 million from the last time we updated our budget back in May. We do have our 3% required reserve for economic uncertainties that are, are part of this, that is $17.8 million. And it's less than the $18.6 million that we had estimated. Again, because this is based on how much we spend, if we don't spend everything, then we don't have, we only have to set aside 3% of what we spend. Back in May, it was a projection of what we thought we were gonna spend, so that's why it's $750,000 less, less at this time than May. Our other assigned line is approved carryover request, so what we didn't spend, we do give the opportunity. Maybe it didn't come in by June 30, maybe it came in on July 15 or, or August 1. So we allow to carry over those funds, we can't count those in the prior year because we didn't receive them by June 30. So we'll allow a carryover request for the items to come in over the summer, and then it comes out of our, our current year, our current year budget. Other committed is $17.8 million of an additional 3% reserve. So as you know, the board, 3% is the requirement for district car size, the board has approved an additional 3%. So that shows up in the other committed line, as well as unspent supplemental and concentration grant funds. This year was $12.5 million, so those two added together is the $30 million, $30.3 million of other committed. Were required to set those aside, and then once we subtract everything, we have unassigned fund balance. Back in May, it was 48, just shy of $49 million, 48.9 million, it's actually $55.7 million, that's an improvement of $6.8 million. The $55 million is, is about 9% of our total general fund expenditures. We have, we have about a $600 million total general fund expenditures, both unrestricted and restricted. So our unassigned balance that we have, $55.7 million, is, is about a 9% of our total, of our total fund that we have available. Unrestricted revenues had a positive variance of, of only 0.5% for our estimated actuals. We had estimated revenues unrestricted of $445,654,000, they actually came in at $447,988,000. And you can see the variances there listed on this slide. Unrestricted lottery, interest income, net gains, losses on investments, those were improvements from May. And then we had a correction for our transportation reimbursement. That was an error we found in our calculation back in May, so we had to make that adjustment going forward. But overall, 0.5% variance, positive variance on our unrestricted general fund revenues. Unrestricted general fund expenses had a variance of 3.6%. Again, we estimated just shy of $382,381,982,000, we spent $368,722,000. And you can see the, the differences here. Salaries and benefits, it's $5.9 million, but that represents a 1.2 variance. We had, we have $328 million budgeted for our unrestricted general fund expenses for salaries and benefits. We were off by $5.9 million, it's 1.2% variance. Materials and supplies, $4.4 million, that's an 18% variance out of a $24 million budget. But this was planned textbook orders that, that we had, they did not arrive by June 30, so this will show up in the next year. That's the reason that that variance was a little higher than we would expect at this point in time. Services operating expenses, we had $3.7 million positive variance. That represented 5.4% of the total budget for, for that line item. And then other outgo, this is, this is where we get to charge indirect costs to our restricted programs. So if we have a restricted program, we do not get funds for human resources or business services or, or, or other, we don't get funding for that. So when we have a restricted program, we're allowed to charge a certain percentage for those areas to support that restricted program. But if we don't spend the dollars, we can't charge it, and again, that was an example of not spending everything on the restricted side. We'll make that up this year as we spend those dollars in the current year. We also have other uses, this had a 7.28% variance, and you can see the breakdown here. $7.2 million net change and transfers to other funds. The biggest one here, again, we set aside funds, we transfer funds out for future textbook purchases. That is one of the, the benefits of this district, so when those textbook adoptions come into play, two, three, four years from now, we have the fund set aside. But they're in another fund, they're sitting in another fund. We had planned to have those expenses this year, which means we would have had to transfer dollars back to this fund. We didn't have them, so we didn't have to make that transfer, we'll make that this year, but that's why, that's why that variance is there. The net change and transfers to from other funds. And then other, other ones that we had, decrease in routine restricted maintenance, increase in special education contributions, and other restricted contributions. We have other funds that are listed on this slide other than the general fund. Multiple funds across the district. There's a brief summary of what those funds are for. Down the left-hand side, the beginning balance for the year, net change and ending balance. We're pleased to report that they all have a positive ending balance. There is no encroachment on the general fund for any of these areas. And many of them go to support activities in the general fund, as I, as I mentioned earlier briefly. Some revisions, since our budget adoption, we did not know back in late May or early June when we adopted the budget are listed here. And you'll see those in detail at our first interim budget revision that will presented to you, presented to you in December. We do recommend approval of our 2425 unaudited actuals financial report for all funds. And then, what this will do is it'll, it'll set up the audited portion of our financial statements, which will happen this fall. The auditors will come in, review our financial statements as presented here, and then they will present that report to you, to the board for approval after the first of the year. At this point, I turn it back over to President Meestis for public and board comments.
All right. Thank you for that presentation, Mrs. Zerly. Are there any comments from the public on this agenda item?
Fon Peterson, M desto 007 chapter president. When we were at the Budget Advisory Committee meeting last week, on Tuesday, I think it was, there were mention of maybe that the district was in a financial position where there wouldn't be additional layoffs beyond what was already approved last year. And those were campus supervisor positions. And we're wondering, not expecting an answer, not asking a question. I'm wondering if any of the funds that were not spent this year put in some way be used to doubly ensure that doesn't happen, that we don't have layoffs in addition to the ones that are already approved. And if that was the wonder. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments from the public? All right. Comments or questions from the board? All right. Student Board Rep Tor.
If I'm understanding correctly, did you mention something about possible expenses for like future textbooks? Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. We, we have these periodic, what's called an adoption for textbooks. And so, instead of waiting until that happens two or three years from now, we set aside funds now for those future expenses. It's kind of like a savings account, but that, yes, we do that with, with textbooks and other expenditures as well.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board? All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the unaudited financial statements for 2425? Moved approval by Vice President Mejia.
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Marks.
Thank you.
We'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Daly.
Aye.
Trustee Irvin.
Aye.
Trustee Lopez.
Aye.
Trustee Marks.
Aye.
Vice President Mejia.
Aye.
President Meestis, aye. Student Rep Garcia.
Aye.
Student Rep Tor.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Brings us to item B8. Mr. Henderson. To your show.
All right. Good evening. Only in recent memory, there was a fourth quarter, seemed like a bit of a blowout. Fans started to leave the stadium. Then all kinds of excitement broke out in the fourth quarter. I don't know if you caught that.
Fifteen-point comeback. Got it.
I will not promise that excitement in the fourth quarter, but I am happy to be here to present my few items. Item B8 is recommending approval of a rev, rev, resolution authorizing the assignment of teachers outside their credentialed academic major or minor. Most often, we present this resolution for a certificated staff who are credentialed in one area that allows them to teach an elective outside of the core academic classes, including the interscholastic athletic period for which they, students receive PE credit, teachers give a grade. In this case, it's for that purpose of the interscholastic athletics coaching assignment essentially. It's been determined that the individuals listed qualify under the authorization granted through this resolution, and we recommend that the board approve this item.
All right. Thank you. Are there any comments from the public on this agenda item? Any comments or questions from the board? Do I hear a motion to approve resolution 252607, authorizing assignment of teachers outside credential area in accordance with ED code 44258.7 for the 2526 school year?
Okay, you, I can second.
Okay, I hear a motion by Trustee Irvin, and a second by Board Representative Tor. Roll call, vote. Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Daly.
Aye.
Trustee Irvin.
Aye.
Trustee Lopez.
Aye.
Trustee Marks.
Aye.
Trust, Vice President Mejia.
Aye.
President Meestis, aye. Student Board Rep Garcia.
Aye.
Student Board Rep Tor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one.
All right. Thank you. Item B9. This is a waiver request related to the credentialing requirement for certificated instructors as required by the CTC. In this case, it applies to two CTE teachers who are proficient in their respective industries, but who don't yet have formal pedagogical training in instructing English learners. Upon approval, this waiver covers the requirement while the teachers complete coursework as part of the process of clearing their respective credentials. And we recommend as well, the board approve this item.
All right. Thank you. Are there any comments from the public on this agenda item? Seeing none. Any comments from, or questions from the board? Oh, there was one and took it off. Okay. Hearing, seeing none. Do I hear a motion to approve public notice? Do I hear a motion to approve the waiver request to the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing under California Code 44253.11? First, okay, so I hear a motion from Trustee, Student Board Rep Garcia. And second by Trustee Lopez. Roll call, vote. Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Daly.
Aye.
Trustee Irvin. Trustee Lopez.
Aye.
Trustee Marks.
Aye.
Vice President Mejia.
Aye.
President Meestis, aye. Student Board Rep Garcia.
Aye.
Student Bor, Rep Tor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one.
All right. Home stretch, like the, the last field goal at the very end. Here we go. Item B10 is a waiver request related to a credentialing requirement for one administrator as required for the, by the CTC for the preliminary administrative credential. In this case, it applies to one administrator previously, a healthy start coordinator. And they were selected for an adult education pupil services administrator position at Elliott. It's been verified the individual has, has the appropriate units for the waiver, and the individual is on track for completion of the program. Upon approval, the waiver covers the requirement for the employment in the position for us that were selected, and we recommend that the board approve this item.
All right. Thank you. Are there any comments from the public on this agenda item? Seeing none. Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none. Do I hear a motion to approve the waiver request to the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing under California ED Code 44270? Okay, motion by Trustee Daly.
Second.
Second by Trustee Irvin. Roll call, vote. Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Daly.
Aye.
Trustee Irvin.
Aye.
Trustee Lopez.
Aye.
Trustee Marks.
Aye.
Vice President Mejia.
Aye.
President Meestis, aye. Student Board Rep Garcia.
Aye.
Student Board Rep Tor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Does anyone have any items to be placed on the future board agendas? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? So moved by Board, Vice President Mejia. Second by Trustee Daly. And roll call, vote to adjourn. Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Daly.
Aye.
Trustee Irvin. Trustee Lopez.
Good night, everyone. Aye.
Trustee Marks.
Aye.
Vice President Mejia.
Aye.
President Meestis, aye. Student Board Rep Garcia.
Aye.
Student Board Rep Tor.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.